All right, everybody ready?
Sir.
I'll welcome everybody to the December 3rd meeting. It's six oh three if I could get approval of the agenda this time. Second?
Second.
Second on favor, aye?
Aye.
Pastor Josh Ackles, you want to open us up in a pledge of invocation? And thank you very much.
Let us pray. The Holy Father, we're so thankful for who you are, we're so thankful for your mercy and your grace, and for sending Jesus, we're thankful for this Christmas season and the reminder of that, and His life and death and resurrection so that we can have life. Lord, I pray for this meeting now, as we have so many leaders here who lead our community, I pray you would fill them with your Spirit, you would give them wisdom and discernment to make the decisions best necessary to help our community thrive and flourish. And we pray this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. All right, we'll look for, move on to our board appointments if we can. Our first board appointment we have is reappoint Manhattan to the election board for a four-year term. Get a motion to...
Mr. Chair, if I could ask that we do them all concurrently?
As a slate, we got one that is not.
Mr. Adams is asked to be removed because of health issues.
But slate other than that one?
Correct.
So you want me to read all of them and then do all of them at one time? What would you like to do?
Sure, if you want to read it. It's up to you.
All right, we got, also we have reappoint Joy Carr to the Middle Georgia Regional Commissioner for a one-year term. Reappoint Chris Widener to the Middle Georgia Regional Commission for a one-year term for the board. Reappoint Howell Creek to the Plant and Zoning Board for a five-year term. Reappoint Joy Carr to the Central Georgia Joint Development Authority, and reappoint Delon Martin to the Central Georgia Joint Development Authority Board for a four-year term.
Motion to approve, Chairman.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? None, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Let's have it. All right, we move on to consider the agenda and approve of some minutes. There's an error on work sessions which we didn't have, but we had the third Tuesday, November nineteenth, along with the executive session. Y'all had opportunity to review the minutes, I will entertain a motion.
移到
Second.
Second, any discussion? None, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Down here. All right, we'll move on to visitors. Mr. Matt Sims, you have a petition you want to bring to us tonight?
Thank you. All right. In light of the county's recent issues with their sales audit, and in light of other alarming activities and reports coming from the Board of Assessors and the Tax Assessor's Office, I have here a petition with one hundred and seventy-nine signatures to present to the Board of Commissioners requesting the removal of the Board of Assessors.
Any question for Mr.? Any question for Mr. Sims? None? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is Mr. John Trussell here tonight?
Yes, sir, right here.
Come on, you're signed in as a visitor, we added you in the... Wow.
We just got here, got delayed by traffic.
That's all right.
Are you ready?
Right there, right on it, you just walk up through. Introduce yourself and...
Just walk right in.
Your timing was perfect, wasn't it?
I guess. I'm John Trussell, I'm the co-chair of the Georgia Committee for the American Friends of Lafayette, and we're a national organization. And we're getting ready to host General Lafayette's two-hundredth anniversary visit to Georgia. And I've got some pamphlets here for you. First thing I'll draw your attention to is a map.
Thank you, how about you?
Now, if you might remember your eighth grade history, General Lafayette was a very important person in the American Revolution. And forty years after the Revolution, he decided to have a victory tour of America at the invitation of President James Monroe. He visited twenty-four states, traveled thousands of miles on a lot of roads where nothing more than in Indian trails, especially in Georgia. Our roads were very bad, and he was often sick from going so fast over our roads in a horse-drawn carriage. When he got to Savannah, he'd already come through South Carolina. He spent two days in South Carolina, and he was so busy, he missed his own dancing ball. He had to leave town quickly to keep up with his schedule. He went up the Savannah River on the riverboat Altamahaw, went all the way up to Augusta where he was greeted by the mayor and Governor Truitt there. Spent a couple of days there, went over to Warrington, spent a day there, receptions, dances, and so forth. Then came down to Sparta, same kind of greeting, as an American hero. Then he went to Millisville, which was the state capital in eighteen twenty-five. Now, coming down beyond Millisville, I wanted to kind of bring your attention to a book that I've been closely... The History of Jones County, eighteen oh seven to nineteen oh seven, by Mrs. Williams. And I'm not sure when this book was written, I think it was back in the fifties. But she did an excellent job of putting this book together, and I've studied it very closely. In fact, when I read through here, we had two or three pages about Lafayette's visit. And when I called to the Clinton Historical Society trying to, you know, get this set up, and they said, "Well, you know, there's a lot of history here, and in the book it says he spent a good bit of time in Clinton, and there's a historical marker there and that sort of thing." But actually, what happened upon a lot of research that I did is he came through Millisville, came down through Jones County on Highway... Actually, it was the federal road at the time, which became Highway forty-nine, okay? Gray did not exist at the time, there was only Clinton. And he stopped somewhere in Jones County at a stagecoach stop and got fresh horses.
My house.
It's your house?
I'm serious.
All right.
Yes.
Well, that's good to know, because that's something I didn't know.
Yeah.
Well, that is not documented in this book, so we'll rewrite the book. But he stopped and got fresh horses that were provided by Governor Truitt every fifteen miles. You know, of course, horses get tired, they slow down, right? So they wanted him on this quick schedule, because he had a lot to do and everything was set up. Anyway, what we want to do is celebrate his passage through Jones County. You know, history's not quite right, but he's a big part of Jones County history. He met a small entourage there at the stagecoach stop. It's kind of lost in history, it's exactly what happened there, but he came on down through Jones County and then went on to Macon. He spent two and a half hours in Macon, and we're... Every town that we have is a celebration. So we're going on to Macon, and then to Roberta where he spent the night at the Indian Agency. And Benjamin Hawkins had already passed away by that time, but he still spent the night there, and then went on down to Buena Vista, went down to Fort Mitchell on the Chattahoochee River, and all up through Alabama, and all the way back up north to Virginia. So that's kind of what happened. Anyway, Lafayette's visit through Jones County is notable and very important to local history and the citizens of Jones County, and we want to celebrate. That's why we would like to make a stop in Jones County on March the twenty-seventh of twenty twenty-five, and have our Lafayette actor and his horse-drawn carriage have a short parade around the Jones County courthouse, a few short speeches by the mayor and county commission chairman. And we'll have, you know, local school bands playing patriotic music, and then we would have a reception. And newspapers and TV would be invited. We see this as a great opportunity to educate our children about local history and think it would be a great positive and uplifting occasion for Jones County. We only ask your blessings for your support of this event, and we're not asking for any money. We do have some money that was donated to us by DAR, SAR, and other historical groups, so we'll be using that for this occasion. And the Clinton Historical Society is supportive of this effort. My wife and I met with them a few months ago here in Jones County, and they said, "We'll put it together and we'll support it." And Earlene Hamilton of that group suggested that we come tonight and talk with you about this and get your support. So that's where we're at, and at this time I'll take any questions, as you may.
Any questions?
No. I think it's really interesting, and the best part is not asking for any funding from the county.
The best part's that out there.
Yeah, that's true.
The best part is that they stopped at my house that I grew up in.
Of course they did.
It is, it's seventeen miles to downtown Millisville and seventeen miles to downtown Macon.
Okay.
And it was the stagecoach house.
All right, that's great. I'd like to talk with you later so we can kind of get that documented. I would like to mention to you that one thing that we're incorporating into our tour is Lafayette's spy. His name was James Armistead. He was an African-American person that worked in the British camp. And he was also kind of going back and forth, he was kind of under the radar, but he was picking up a lot of valuable information from the British and passing it on to Lafayette and the general Washington. So he was a very important guy. And during Lafayette's tour, he ran across Armistead at a stop. He saw him, he called him up and made a big deal out of him, because he was a big deal. And we want to make a big deal of African-American participation in our event. There were over five thousand African-Americans involved in the American Revolution. And they've been sort of forgotten. There's probably a handful of notable people that are well documented, and James Armistead was one of those. And we have a guy that is a veteran, an American veteran, that's going to play that part in a uniform, sort like mine. But he will be part of our parade, and we'll be bringing him to our events to highlight the African-American component of the American Revolution. So...
Do you have the date set yet?
Yes, sir, it is the twenty... Hold on a second, I had it in here. It is twenty-seventh.
March twenty-seventh?
March twenty-seventh, twenty-five. We'll be in Savannah the twenty-first and twenty-second of March, Augusta the twenty-third, Warrington the twenty-fourth, Sparta the twenty-fifth, Millisville the twenty-sixth, Jones County the twenty-seventh, Macon on the twenty-eighth, Roberta on the twenty-ninth, and then on into Alabama on the thirtieth. I'm not sure, is Earlene Hamilton here tonight?
She is.
She is.
Earlene, do you have anything you want to add to my presentation? Come on up.
I would just quickly say that Mr. Trussell did make a presentation to the Historical Society early this year, and we are certainly supportive of the effort. We just, when he started talking about the things that he thought would be important to do, Clinton is kind of compact, so in terms of parade and the visibility and opportunity for a reception and restrooms and that sort of thing, it seemed like the right thing to do to bring it to Gray, the current county seat. And we would just ask as the Historical Society that the county and the commission board be supportive of the effort and allow them the opportunity to use the facilities here in town and be supportive in whatever way John might need.
I think it'd be good to get the city on board, too.
Mayor Proktem here right now, okay?
Yeah.
We want you, sir.
You got Main Street gray here?
Yeah, Main Street gray here, we got it covered tonight.
Right, right.
I just had to explain to Mr. Trussell that from the Historical Society standpoint, we were not in a position as a small board ourselves to take the lead on it. So that's why I felt like it was important for him to come and get the county's support and involvement, and then hopefully the city and any other organizations that would be willing to help.
Right.
Thank you, Earlene. Did want to mention, a lot of people came through Jones County in eighteen oh seven when it was settled. You know, it was carved out of Baldwin County when all the counties were split up. Do y'all remember why we have so many counties? We have one hundred and fifty-nine counties. The legislators, legislators and their wisdom decided that no citizen should be more than a mule's ride away, one day's ride, from government. So that's the reason we have so many counties. They split them up so you could get to where you wanted to go quickly. And we're stuck with that today. We have a lot of counties, we're fine. It's just part of the history.
They get a lot of history to do.
Yeah. I did find out through Mrs. Williams's book, which is an excellent book, by the way, that one of my great grandfathers, Dickerson Lumpkin, was awarded a revolutionary land grant in Jones County in eighteen twenty-seven. So he's documented in this book, and she did a great job. And also, I have another family line of French Huguenots that came through Jones County. They fled France in the seventeen hundreds, and a lot of them wound up later on in Jones County and all over the South. It was Matthew Cabiness, and there's a Cabiness Cemetery in Bradley, just outside of town here. So a lot of people have roots in Jones County.
Definitely, we appreciate it. Like I said, we enjoyed a history lesson, I'm looking forward to it.
Well, thank you very much, we appreciate your support. And I just wanted to come tonight and kind of brief you on what we were doing, and we look forward to being here very soon.
All right, thanks very much.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to new business tonight. Bid award for pickleball court. Mr. Burke here.
How y'all doing this evening? As you guys know, in August of this year, you guys awarded or allocated three hundred thousand dollars for a new pickleball complex. Since then, we've put it out for bid. We received four bids. We assembled a committee and evaluated the bids based on timeline, total cost, references, and the amount of projects within the last five years. We scored them in all those areas and unanimously came up with match point tennis as the vendor that scored the highest. There are also the low bid and the bid with the best timeline. So it is the committee's recommendation that we award the bid to them.
Any questions for Burke?
It's two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars, the allocation was three hundred thousand dollars.
So we come in on the budget.
Yes.
Great.
And the high bid, by the way, was four hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars, so...
Wow.
Yep.
As I was reading through, there's some additionals that could be added on? Do you see any of those? Is that with the additional on it, or?
No, that's included the base... That includes the courts, the fencing, and the sidewalks. So any of the pavilions or those types of things would need to be added on.
Where they add alternates for all the...
Yes, yeah.
On the bid on them.
And they said that, you can see in the graphic that we gave you, that they could begin construction within ten days of the contract being signed, weather permitting. They have to have temperatures over fifty degrees, I think for like a two-week period. So I don't know if we have that coming anytime soon or not, but...
Yep, probably not. So what's the wishes of the board?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Any more discussion? If none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any pose, aye's have it, thank you, Burke.
Thank y'all very much.
Keep Jones Beautiful, twenty twenty-three, twenty-four recap, and agreement. Mr. Jackson?
Good evening. How are y'all?
Doing about you?
Good.
Might get ten days. Might get ten days.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, so what I just presented y'all with is the annual report of the activities that we have been involved in over the past year. And wanted to make sure that you had that, give you a copy of it. If you do have any questions on what anything is, I can certainly answer it. But, and if you want me to go over any of it, I certainly can as well.
Okay, we've got a lot planned, that's great.
Well, this is what we did.
What you did, that's right. Brendan, you did a lot, how's that?
Busy year. On the legislative day, how much lobbying do we do to try to get more grant funding and more allocated in the budget for beautification projects?
I'm not sure about that. That particular day is...
More about going up and visiting with them?
Yes, sir. And I know that we, several affiliates had put up different exhibits and displays of what they had put on, but we had some, some of the legislators that came down to support it all.
All right, just always good to try to get more.
That's right, that's right.
And I'm going to say that the, two weekends ago, the Haddock Revitalization Project, that was a great first-time event. Hope that continues to grow.
Very good success.
It was.
And we've had a lot of compliments on that, and Haddock did a very good job of it.
It did. So that is our, that is, that's the report. We also need to, we also need to approve or sign a new agreement for the upcoming year. And so I'm about to either look really silly or really smart, so I didn't bring one with me. Do I need one?
We can, we can make a motion to approve it and have Chairman sign it, it's only his signature, aye?
Well, I will tell you the two, the two things that we changed.
Oh, my goodness, here we go.
Where's your button at?
One of the, the, one of the items mentioned that we would do four cleanups per year, and after going through this year, we decided to, we recommend to adjust that back to two. And so then we would do a spring and a fall. And then for education, it mentioned going into each school a certain number of times, and we reworded that as a recommendation to, as requested or as needed, as it's just sometimes difficult. It depends on when they need us or what they need us. This particular year, the pre-K utilized us a pretty good bit. But I think as we continue to grow in the work that we're doing, that we can have more, and we also work with the Transition Academy with the high school as well. So it just depends on what the need is. So I didn't want to have something in there that we wouldn't be able to attain that, that wouldn't look as good.
So Commissioner Kish, is that a motion?
I have a motion to sign a twenty twenty-four, twenty-five agreement with Keep Jones Beautiful with the changes mentioned by Mr. Jackson.
Second.
Second, two seconds? Any more discussion? None, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Let's have it. Thank you, sir.
I'm next, dude.
Yep.
Just keep going.
So we, do I need to go sit again? No, I'm just...
Come back.
The, so we want to go ahead and plan the date for our spring Great American Cleanup now so that we can get ahead of the ballgame on our Star Grant to make sure we get that grant funding, because that grant funding, we have to have minimum ninety days in advance of the event to have submitted that. And so the two days that our committee had come up with that did not already conflict with activities during the spring were the twenty-ninth of March and the nineteenth of April. So I would throw that, I would throw that at y'all to...
Yeah. Is the competition going to start again?
Heck, yeah.
Oh, yeah. I will say the April nineteenth, you're going to conflict with a lot of Earth Day events. At that time, so my recommendation would be March twenty-ninth.
Spring break? Spring break usually is the first week of...
April?
April?
I think it would be the weekend before.
Yeah, it would be the weekend.
Brendan, it's on your sheet, all the things while...
Well, she done...
She, they answered it, so I didn't want to...
I didn't want to interrupt. Yeah, spring break would be the fifth through the thirteenth of April, so...
So it'd be the weekend after. Weekend before.
Yeah.
The Saturday that starts spring break.
It's going, you two are going to be battling again, so who wants to do the motion and the... For the date? Or do we need a...
Are you good with that date?
Twenty-ninth?
Uh huh. I make a motion to adopt the twenty-ninth of March.
Second by the...
Are y'all good with that date, Brendan?
Yes, sir.
Do we need to move it up to the weekend before, since we're going to have Lafayette coming through town?
Not the twenty-ninth, it'd be on the twenty-seventh.
Yeah, do we need to have it the weekend before? I can't the weekend before, I was giving you the opportunity. That's River's wedding to win this year.
I was going to say she set you up really nicely.
Since we're in the discussion stage, any more challenges? Any more challenges before we go to the vote?
I'm just going to win again.
Commissioner...
Oh, she's fine.
Okay.
We all win.
That's it.
That's right, we all win.
There's no more discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Let's have it, thank you.
Have a good night.
Mr. Rizner, is it ACCG Irma Resolution for HB four fifty-one?
Yes, Chairman, so the state legislature passed a law, HB four fifty-one, as you mentioned there, that required all public entities to provide PTSD coverage to first responders. And there's sort of two parts to it. One is a lump sum payment, and then there's a recurring, recurring monthly amount for eligible first responders. ACCG has developed an insurance product to meet the requirements of that state law. And so what you have before you tonight is the resolution that they require the board to pass so that we can purchase that mandated coverage.
Any questions for Mr. Rizner on this? A motion to adopt this coverage?
Motion to adopt the resolution to allow us to get the coverage for HB four fifty-one.
Second.
Second, any more discussion? If none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Let's have it, thank you. All right, moving on, old business. We're at the Remaining Broadman Funds Amendment to the TriCo Go Agreement.
Chairman, I make a motion, we amend the original agreement to dedicate the remaining eight hundred and five thousand dollars plus interest from the ARPA funds to complete projects on Exhibit A of our agreement.
Motion, we have a second. Second, Commissioner Wood. Any more discussion on this? None, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Let's have it, thank you. Discussion on package sales and spirits, Mr. Rizner?
So, Mr. Chairman, the next step in the distilled spirits process for the county is to develop an ordinance that governs, governs those stores in Jones County. I'm going to send this list around, I emailed this out to you earlier, but just some, some things for you to consider as you try to put this ordinance together. I think at this point, what Ashley and I probably need is just guidance from the board on what you want to include in the, in the ordinance. And so this is just kind of my stab at giving you a list of things to think about, and you can tell us if you, if you like them or don't like them, or if there are other things that, that you would, would like to include. So I guess I'll just go through this list quickly, and then, Mr. Chairman, you want me to go through them one at a time, and the board give their thoughts, or just rattle them off, and people can give their general observations? Or at the end of it, we just need some, some direction on which pieces of this y'all would, would like to include?
Personally, I read through it, and I saw the certificate occupancy. Is this going to require them to put in a new building, or is a existing building able to board?
That's up to, to y'all.
I s- yeah, I saw that too, Chairman, I was concerned, it says certificate occupancy required before you can apply for the license. I would think you can apply for the license, but it's pending a certificate occupancy, cause you're not, if you don't have certi- certificate occupancy, you can't occupy the building. But, I don't think that should be a requirement to apply for the license, because you're gonna build a building, get ready to occupy it, and then apply for a license and not get it?
No, you're gonna do the, no, I think it read that they, they apply for, for the license pending the, uh...
This says certificate of occupancy required before license application. Before you even apply for the license, you gotta see a...
That's kinda, I think that's...
I agree.
They need to know that they're gonna get, they've got the license approved pending the, the building.
Pending the C.O., yeah. So rewording that.
And, like I said, the only thing I did see is it looked like it was only new buil- buildings. I mean, we, we might have some...
Yeah.
I'm thinking of builds around the county that people might be interested in, in doing something with that's sitting vacant right now, that could be, uh, utilized for this without, uh...
And I think that's where the square footage requirement and the lot size requirement and stuff like that would, would come in handy.
Do we have those requirements? I mean, like, square footage, is there a minimum?
There, there, it's in the, the package you sent us.
This is all up, up to you guys to kinda figure this out.
I think you said it's examples of square footage and stuff.
Right.
That other counties have used another...
And five thousand was the number I saw in a couple places. But I mean, that's, this, this is, uh, none of this is by way of recommendation, these are just things for you to think about, and it's all things that, uh, y'all could include or could not include. I'm gonna motion to table this to a work session.
Um, ju- but I, a second for discussion.
You have a second, put a motion with a second for discussion.
Yeah, um, Jason, one thing I didn't see on there, so I see where it talks about the fee amount for a license, and I know something we got determined, and that's just like our, uh, other fees, you know? Do you reduce the fee to bring more people in? Or do you increase the fee, because you're not gonna have very many, uh, sales, uh, distilled spirits places anyway? My bigger concern is, what do we do if they violate the conditions of their, of their license? There's, I mean, other than take their license away? Now we're, now we've got a building that could potentially be dilapidated if nobody decides to move back in there. I think there oughta be more punitive side of if you violate your conditions of your license, rather than doing the, and, and some people would say a good thing in bringing the business in is if you don't act right. You know, there, there's more cost to it than, than hurting people that wanna start a business. That's just my opinion, just, just the thought of, of, if we're gonna discuss fee amounts for the license, we, I think we should discuss what happens if you don't do what you're supposed to do with the license. That's always a problem. Easy to get in the doors, hard to make them, keep the door right. The other part was security cameras. I know, especially in B, uh, the biggest problem we've seen there is you got a video camera that my, my home video camera's three times better than, you know...
Exactly.
Uh, I, do we need to put in a...
A viable requirement.
A ten-eighty camera?
Commercial grade.
Megapixel requirement in there? So that we can, cause the only time you're gonna need it is when you got a problem. And i- if you have a problem and you need it, and the Sheriff's Department don't have anything to go off of.
Right, it needs to be a commercial grade, not something out of a box store and making, that you would buy and just set up yourself. It needs to be something that can be easily accessed and downloaded when needed.
And I can call Earl Hunt-Freeze Jason, because he contacted me a couple months ago, um, regarding some changes and some requirements for, um, gas stations in the county to have certain level of, of security cameras. Um, and so it would be good if it were consistent. But he, I think he's done sort of a lot of research on what would be beneficial.
I would definitely like to have the Sheriff's input on this too, from a safety standpoint of how do we, um, how do we manage this? Because he's gonna be responsible for protecting our community like he always does, so...
So you'd like to have a work session on the first meeting? We have a work session already?
Mm-hmm.
Order it.
Order?
On the first meeting in January?
I think, I talked with, I met with Brandon and, uh, Tim this afternoon. I think we'd rather do that one, the second meeting in January, if, uh, if we could.
Okay. And then there's another work session for something that we have a quick turnaround on, what was that?
The House Bill.
Yeah, the House Bill.
That's definitely gonna be on the first one.
Can we do both of those at the same, I mean...
Yeah, we can have the work session and then the meeting right behind it, cause all that is, is a vote, right? On the, the House Bill, five eighty-one is a hearing, you have to have it a specified time and date. So, yeah, that'll be... We also got to have the vote to...
Right, it's very specific how you handle that.
Cause we've got to have it in the newspaper the very first week of January. After our January...
So that's January sixth. No, seven, sorry. Okay, it's a work session that day.
For House Bill or for this?
We're gonna have to do both, really, I hate to say it, but we need to do both to, uh, uh, start the year off, if we, if y'all are capable of, I mean...
How long? And this one gotta be decided and, and voted, so we can get it in place January first? Cause if it goes, if this is approved for January first, if somebody comes in on January second, says, I'm ready for a license, already got a building built?
No, yeah, I think you've gotta put a statutory scheme in place, uh, before we can grant any licenses. Right now, I think, but you have a, a referendum that was approved, but you don't have an ordinance that, that governs how that works. Actually, that's your question, I'm sorry.
No, I agree.
I just, I just don't want people to come in and say, well, y'all knew about it in November.
I mean, well, I think the House, I mean, the discussion on that's probably gonna be very little, um, for the House Bill, so thirty minutes for it, and thirty minutes.
I mean, this is gonna take y'all a little while to answer all of these.
Yeah, it's probably a two-hour work session to go through all this.
Hopefully, we can answer them before we get to the work session, discuss them then.
Try to get all the input we can from the sheriff ahead of time and all, so we can, uh, go through the... Y'all gonna be able to push it, the work session, e- everything through an hour, or we need to go? Y'all will, would y'all be able for a four o'clock work session? I mean, we don't do it once in eight years, I think, what do you think?
Yeah.
Alright, we'll do four, we'll do a four o'clock for, for package sales and five o'clock for, uh, House Bill. Alright, good deal.
Uh, Jason, you still wanna send this out ahead of time, so we, I mean, I, I would say, is this, is you having word of...
If House Bill is only gonna take thirty minutes, why don't you do House Bill at four?
You got a copy of that?
Have an hour and a half.
And there was a highlight of a copy.
I know if he wanted to share a document where we could throw our comments on there, and it, and you can have them all kept.
But you've got to stop and do the House Bill at five.
We don't have to.
If you do it second.
As long as we don't start the meeting, as long, as long as we're good, as long as we do the meeting, we could do the, we can start it later.
The House Bill? I don't know if you have to notice it in the paper for a certain time, it needs to be started at five.
Are we talking about the public here?
So we need to figure out, because... Y'all have meetings on the seventh. We go to print on the seventh, so we're gonna have to have it in there before y'all meet, so we need to talk about how we...
Almost need to call a meeting right after the first.
Call a meeting? So we, we have to call a meeting?
Not on the first.
Give me a, give me a time in January to do the...
We would be fine with writing it, just on, if you all have a consensus, if you're pretty sure you're gonna vote on it, uh, we just need to talk about it, I can see.
We just need to come up some time.
Yeah.
Call meeting on the sixth?
And it was...
Well, no, they're gonna print on the...
You'd need a call meeting on the second, probably.
Yeah, I'm, I'm out of town. I'm out of town till the sixth.
I mean, is that something, they can tell you tonight when they intend to have the meeting, so you can...
Well, Jason can figure out, or y'all can let us know, cause it has to be a certain sign.
Yeah.
But the paper comes out on the January one, right? It's a Wednesday.
Well, it will, yes.
Even though it goes to print on Tuesday night.
But...
We can have it in January one's paper, that we got a call meeting on the seventh.
I don't know, there's just specific, there's just specific things in that bill that you have to do. And the city's having to do it, and you all are having to do it really impatiently.
Yeah, it was, it was pretty clear in it, in that.
So that's just something we have to work together on, is what I'm saying.
If we pull information, we're gonna need and have it.
Can't wait till the last minute to do it.
Right, cause you've only got ninety days, and those ninety days figure in...
This is gonna possibly take longer than an hour, and the House Bill meeting's gonna take thirty minutes, once you have House Bill at four, and then this starting at four thirty.
Yeah, that work.
Then you have an hour and a half to get all the questions answered on the distilled spirits.
Yeah, but it's not, it's, it's not being, it's not gonna be a time to get it in the...
Unless we put it in the January one.
You put it in the week before.
Paper.
I don't, I don't know, I haven't read that part.
I think it has to be advertised with, what, seven days prior to? There's some very specific language in there about it.
I was hoping we'd get Jason to research that and get with it.
Yeah, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. If it runs on January the first, January the seventh is the seventh day.
Right.
So we need to just make sure that complies.
I think the publication date's actually Thursday.
I think that's the, the legal, yeah, it comes out on Wednesday, I think it's legal.
So then, well, that wouldn't give you seven full days before the seventh? So you may have to have a call meeting on the fourteenth for House Bill, right? So you have your seven days? But we need to look at it.
We had to look at the research on that and get with us as far as what we need to do, and we'll have a call meeting to, to cover whatever we need to do.
Send us a doodle.
We just don't want to be the reason why. I don't want it to be our fault if something goes wrong.
So the work session may not need to be at four, if we're not doing both of them?
Right.
So why don't we just have a work session on that date, and the time will be, when you send out the agendas, we'll determine the time?
Good on that?
So we can comply with all those requirements.
Okay. Anything else? There, Pro Tim, I see celebrity in the crowd, you're gonna, gonna recognize you. Come on.
Get with us, and that'll make sure we're all in that same timeframe too, cause we're gonna hit that same struggle. Thank y'all for letting me come up and speak tonight, uh, just wanted to say a couple things real quick, if I could. I've been keeping city council up to date on the situation with the Board of Assessors. I spoke with them last night at our meeting, kinda where we were at, wanted to let y'all know that, uh, you have the city's support. We're grateful that y'all have started the process, uh, to remove this board and correct the mistakes that have made, been made. Also, I wanna thank you, Matt, Mr. Sims, for, for gathering signatures and starting the process of the petition and, and getting so many signatures so quickly. As I told them last night, the headline in the paper this last week made it pretty clear. Uh, the board doesn't know its own, it's a, it's not aware of its own rules for voting. It didn't know its rules for how to hold a meeting, it didn't know its rules for when to have a meeting. It didn't know that they weren't having a meeting after voting to have a meeting, they didn't show up to their own meeting. All of you showed up to the meeting that, that they decided they just weren't gonna have. You know, if you're sitting at home watching Jeopardy, it's okay not to know anything. But if you're affecting the lives of the people in our community, you need to know something. I think they deserve to, a written apology to Ashley, the way that Tim stroked, spoke to Ashley at the last meeting was reprehensible. It was rude, he tried to push off his ignorance of what they're supposed to do on you. And then when you tried to help, he was rude to you about it, cut you off and told you, and put you in your place, and I thought it was just terrible. So I just wanted to let y'all know that the, the city is on board, we support, support you in this movement, and, uh, if there's anything that we can do to help, please let us know. So, thank you.
Thank you. Bert, you wanna go first, on, on department hand?
Sure. Not, uh, much to report, uh, we are excited that we have, uh, two football teams, two youth football All-Star teams, are eight and under and ten and under. Uh, they both won district championships, uh, the weekend before Thanksgiving. And this coming up weekend, they will be traveling to Carrollton to play in the, uh, state tournament, so we wish them well. Um, also this weekend, we have opening weekend of youth basketball, and, um, uh, that's about it, so. We're excited about pickleball in the spring.
So are y'all really have, uh, with the youth basketball, because of the high schools' construction coming up? Y'all probably gotta...
It's gonna cost us a little bit, and, you know, make things a little more inconvenient, but we're gonna work through it. You know, it's, court space is always an issue, um, but people understand that renovations have to happen, and we just have to make the best of what we have.
But we may be through with season before the renovation starts.
Yeah, yeah. Originally, there were, the renovations were supposed to start earlier, and they were really gonna affect us, so... It's actually been to our benefit that it's running a little behind. Thank y'all for everything.
Alright, Miranda, you are, you are Jerry, one given, doing a report, Jerry's sitting in the back.
Alright, so, um, for the month of November, we had, um, let's see, it looks like only about ten pending work orders, and we have completed over a hundred, so that was really good. Uh, most of the work orders are usually potholes and mowing. Um, and then we also had the diesel tank probe, which is, we use Vitera root. Uh, that was repaired, which was good, so now we can get our reports for our SIRs, or SIRs, as we call them, and get those back on track, which is great. Um, we have had several employees recognized for working over fifteen years, and I believe Albert Bonner this month has worked over fourteen years, if I'm remembering right, so, um, so that is a great accomplishment as well. Um, we're having James Scales get quotes for us on the culvert that's over at Adahi Drive. Uh, I think, I think Jerry Arnold is gonna meet him or talk to him tomorrow morning about that. And there is a driveway pipe on Chapman Road, and he's going to be, um, giving us a quote on that as well, it's a concrete one, so James Scales gonna help us with that. Other than that, for the month of December, it's only three days in, so we only have four pending work orders. And, um, I think the mowing crew just finished up over at Hilltop today. And we have a contractor taking care of the, there's a, there's a space on Morris Stevens where the asphalt stops and starts, and we've been using a, a sweeper to kinda take care of that, but we went ahead and added a sign in front of it, and we have someone taking care of that as soon as, um, it is fifty degrees or warmer. So that's the only thing about it being cold right now, is we have to wait. So in the meantime, we used cold patch to fill that in, and we put some signs up, so that should help a little bit. And I think that is everything.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Tiffany, you got anything for code enforcement tonight?
Can you say a little bit of good news? Um, recently, we tore down two houses, one in Haddock and one in District Four. Within two months, one of those was put up for tax sale, already has been sold, and the neighbors bought the property. So, they'll be doing something with the property the next thirteen months, and also the money has come back into the county fund, so... That doesn't happen that often, so that's a good thing. Um, got four more I'm about to be tearing down, so rocking right along.
That's good, thank you. You got anything on department hand?
We had the pre-construction meeting this morning on the, uh, forced meeting to the industrial park. That construction will start just after the first of the year, I think January sixth, uh, whatever that Monday is right there, so. Looking forward to getting that started.
Alright. Anything legal, other than we need a executive session? A brief executive session, uh...
Yes, sir.
Alright, citizen comment? You would just introduce yourself, and where you live at?
I'm Mickey Parker, I live at seven thirty Legacy Farms Road, and I have a document I would like to give you. Um, I appreciate your efforts to try and remove the tax assessor board, and they have refused to give me the, I'm sorry.
You're okay.
Uh, the number for how much it might have cost us in revenue. And so, I was able to get this information between talking with the Department of Revenue, some information from Jason, from Sam, and, and from others. This is a spreadsheet for the year of twenty-three, twenty, twenty-two, and twenty-five, uh, twenty-four. Uh, there are twenty-one public utilities in this county. The state penalized us in twenty-two because our sales tax ratio was below thirty-six. We had to assess them at the sales tax ratio. And so we have given the largest tax break in the history of this county to twenty-one entities such as AT&T, Atlanta Gas, the City of Monticello... to twenty-one entities such as AT&T, Atlanta Gas, the City of Monticello, Norfolk Southern, and Tri-County, and on and on. My apologies to the City of Gray, I live in the county, I forgot, you got hit too. The city got hit about three hundred thousand dollars for those three years. If you go to the last page, you'll see the total for the county government and for the school system is eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So, now this is Mickey Parker's numbers, but I'm getting about one point two million dollars at a minimum that we were owed, that we should have collected, we should have billed, but the state said, no, you can't do it because your sales tax ratio is below thirty-six percent. And those numbers come from the change of assessment notice, I have forty-two of them signed by Mary Watts, prepared by Tony George for each of twenty-two and twenty-three, reducing from forty percent to the thirty-two point nine for twenty-twenty-three proposed assessment. Now, my numbers could be wrong, but the tax assessment board has refused with three open record requests to give me numbers or documentation. So my numbers and my documentation is all I've got, but I think it's pretty strong, because this did not come, I mean, this came from Department of Revenue, open records request, and other information I received, and as I said, I've got forty-two Mary Watts signed change of assessment notices for each of the public utilities. Any questions? Here, Ashley.
Thank you.
Certainly, certainly.
Thank you very much.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mickey.
Oh, and I'll be adjusting it for the city, if anyone wants a copy of the spreadsheet or a copy of the signed documents by Mary, I'd be glad to email it to you. If, if you by chance don't already have that.
Thank you.
Any other citizens tonight that wanna come forward?
Elizabeth Williams, Gray, I've done this before, the Highway eighteen, which I know is the state highway and the bypass, and I know Mr. Kitchens has, you know, been working on some things, I just wanna check on it because, like, I just did miss getting the crap knocked out of me yesterday. I mean, I missed it by a minute, like, that wreck that happened that took down the stop sign, I was there in less, less than a minute before it happened. I can't tell you how many times I'm almost hit right there. People, they don't know how to navigate it. They don't, and we're gonna have some really bad things happen there, we're gonna lose children, we're gonna lose teen drivers, we're gonna lose elderly drivers, and everybody on the in-between. It just hasn't happened yet, and we've gotta get serious about it, I don't know what it takes to get serious about it, but something's got to be done. I mean, it's, it's exhausting, our EMS system, I'm positive. I mean, I think we're having wrecks there on, on the regular, I don't think it's, uh, oh my gosh, I can't believe that happened thing. It's, I know you talked about some, I don't know, things being put in so that people can't veer out of the lane when they're turning right onto Eighteen West. So they can't veer out, 'cause that's happening a lot, I've been hit almost head-on right there, from people just not, you know, sidelined and, I'm sorry, and everything else. It's dangerous, it is very, very dangerous, that should have been a roundabout, it never, ever should be what it is, ever. We don't have enough lighting at night, you can't see where you're trying to go, you cannot, if you were on that bypass and you were turning left onto Eighteen West, you can't see. If it weren't for the stripes on the stop sign thing at the bottom that I think the sheriff put on there, I don't even think that's from the state. I mean, it's like a gamble, it's like rolling the dice, will I live, will I die, I don't know, 'cause I can't see it. 'Cause there's no lighting on that side, there needs to be lighting, there needs to be a guard rail right there, we need those states. Truly, there needs to be a red light, something, I mean, 'cause these people are not paying attention. They're just not, and you can't be distracted for one single moment right in there, it is a death sentence, and we're gonna lose people. And I don't know what it's gonna take, like, is there a, like, how many people have to die? I mean, I really wanna know, how many have to die? 'Cause this is gonna happen, we think green settlement's bad, it's bad, and we got lighting down there. But something has to be done here, ranchers and all over there, kudos to TJ and them for putting up the lights that they have. It is somewhat helpful, but it's not their responsibility to take care of a state highway. But that area is just going to grow, I mean, it's not gonna go away. And we're not doing anything to be preventive and proactive, and we should be. And I don't, I don't know what else to do. And I mean, I know you're working on some things.
Yeah, Jackson, do we have any update on that?
I haven't heard anything from G-Dot recently on that, I remember several years ago, uh, three, four, five years ago, talking with them, and I, I think part of the, I think what I remember them telling me was part of the development agreement for the ranchers area there was that if it ever generated sufficient traffic, the developer would have to come back and install a signalized intersection there.
But this is even minus that, like, if that wasn't even there, we still have a serious problem, and what I would like to know from you guys, I would like you to present how many accidents have we had at that intersection just this year?
We can get that from the sheriff's.
And I also wanna know, how many accidents did we have before the development?
In the mornings, seven thirty in the morning, if you go to Dames Ferry School and you come back to Gray, Oakview Circle, you have two-lane traffic waiting to get on the bypass, either turning north or turning south or going straight, so they are in the breakdown lane, starting in Oakview Circle, backed up ten, twelve, fifteen cars.
I mean, we, I would think the school system would be concerned too, we have our school buses going through there, it's not safe.
I went to them.
It is not safe at all.
When I saw the drawings of where eighteen was coming into the bypass, that's when it was just the drawing stages, and I talked to the engineers then, and I told them, I asked them how many kids were we gonna have to have killed on school buses with where they put the entrance to Highway eighteen onto the bypass.
Yeah, and people clearly do not understand how to drive right in there.
So I know at least, um, three people on this board have reached out to our state DOT and reached out to our state representatives, including myself, on several different occasions, and I know Jason has written several letters requesting, uh, some assistance in that area from the pil, the plastic pylons to keep them from going back out.
Right.
We've got a sign there that says, um, yield to oncoming U-turns, I've never seen a sign that says.
Oh, my God. What?
U-turns from where, from north or south?
I would really like you guys to present, how many wrecks have we had? How many have, I don't care if it's just a fender bender, but how many have we had right there this year, and how many have we had before ranchers came? Which, I love ranchers, nothing like that, it's just, this is so poorly designed. Nothing on you guys did not design it, I'm not, I'm, I'm just saying this is poorly designed, people are going to die, and if we have a school bus hit right there, that's gonna be a whole different level of devastation throughout this whole community. That we haven't even, I mean, thank you God that nothing like that's happened, but I'm telling you, it's a matter of time. And we've got, we, as a community, we have to do something.
Can we get that information and put it in the next letter to them?
And present it to us, like, we wanna know, I wanna know, I, I wanna know what is going on right here, because I don't, I'm not the only one, I know I'm not the only one.
No.
And I, and I can't tell you, like, just.
They need to observe the area.
Yeah, this, and the Sheriff's Department can't be there twenty-four seven, I mean, they can't, I do see them out there patrolling, they are trying. Uh, but you can't ask, I mean, that's unfeasible, that's, you know, they can't be there all day, all night, every single day.
Yeah, we've heard Commissioner Kitchens made the comment, he and I think I've been twice, we've met people there, and, uh.
Constituents, I mean taxpayers, two different, other, other than you.
Taxpayers said, how'd y'all let this happen, I said, it's, it's a G-Dot problem that.
Right.
We've let them know about, you know, it's, uh, and I mean, we just need to, I guess we need to be the squeaky wheel that.
Just keep on the road.
Get the grease and just keep telling them.
Keep hammering them.
All right, but thank you, that's.
Hey, thank you, thank you for your concern, we. Anyone else?
Um, Edgar Pitts, I just wanna commend you all of the up, the, uh, cosmetic upgrade of the courthouse, but it was bad timing. Today they had juvenile court, and they, Superior Court was just shut down, they couldn't do anything, 'cause the, the, of the office, you know, they painted in there, and they got court tomorrow, they had juvenile court today, they had commitment court today, and then you had people paying traffic tickets, it's just, it was just a bad timing. And I was one of them, you know, the ladies was just completely shut down, and, you know, and it was, it's just bad timing, that should have been done in the evening or either weekends. It's bad, 'cause they got court tomorrow also, and then they had auction today, so it was, it was bad.
For the, for the record, your, your name and address for, for.
Edgar Pitts. District two.
Jason, is, are the contractors scheduling that with the courts, or are we? I know, uh, building maintenance has been coordinating with, uh, Superior Court on, on the scheduling of all that.
Yeah, they may need to adjust their work schedule to accommodate court proceedings and office activities.
I'll certainly pass that concern along.
Anyone else? Uh, Commissioner Wood, you wanna start us home, Commissioner Thomas tonight?
We don't have a whole lot, it's been a busy year, and I appreciate everybody coming to the meetings, and we, everybody's always invited to these meetings.
Absolutely.
Just hope everybody has a safe and happy Christmas season and happy New Year.
Commissioner Kitchens?
Uh, ditto, happy holidays to everybody, Merry Christmas, hope they have a very, um, safe and joyous New Year. Uh, the only other thing is, I was looking at the, um, PowerPoint that they showed us on this, uh, House Bill five eighty-one, so it, it talks about holding three hearings in the newspaper, it gives the size of it and all, it says one, um, one of the three meetings must be between six and seven P.M. on a business weekday. So you have to mu, publish the intent, um, to the newspaper and district website, and then it talks about, um, must run at least one week prior to the hearing, and not less than thirty square inches, and not in illegal notices, so. But I think you got this, and I'll send it back to you, and, and, but that gives us some parameters, one of them has to be between six and seven, so if the first one.
So if you have to have a special call on the fourteenth, go ahead and do that one at six, then.
Because the city also has to have it, and the Board of Education also has to have it.
Mm-hmm.
Just get.
Then any others that y'all have, you can have at five.
All right, that's good. Anything else?
Nothing, good.
Commissioner Vaughn?
As this is our last meeting of the year, sounds strange. Um, it's also the last meeting of my first four years in politics, I'm still not a politician, I'm a person. So, um, I sit here a lot smarter than I was four years ago, um, but my heart's still in the same place, it's what's good for Jones County. And that's what I'll always wanna do, is what's best for Jones County, um, we, um, I think we've done a lot as a board together, and we've made big differences, um, I hope that we continue to grow on that. Because, um, y'all are like some big brothers that I like to fight with, so. I enjoy y'all. And Ashley kicks me over here sometimes like my little sister, so, um, but I think we, we do great things, and we do great things for our county, and that's what we're here for. Um, I like when we have a big crowd out here, uh, 'cause it makes us, makes me feel more accountable for what we're doing. I know there's a lot of people that watch, because I've already had somebody to send me a picture, um, when you were up speaking, and they've gone, oh my gosh, look what I see in our little town of Jones County, so, um, I'm excited about that. I'm excited that Christmas is coming up, and it's a new beginning, a new year. Congratulations to Mr. Alfred Pitts, tonight was his last board meeting, uh, for the Board of Education, he's finally gonna retire. Um, so congratulations to Mr. Alfred Pitts, he has definitely been a shining light to a lot of people in Jones County, and educated many, and with some wonderful feet to follow in, um, so proud of him, but thank y'all.
Thank you. Commissioner Martin?
Well, I, I think Wendy said it all, um, it, it's been a, a good year. I think, um, from a citizen engagement standpoint, I don't think we've ever seen this many citizens, um, concurrently involved in what we do, what we say, and, and have an influence, um, I think back to the cemetery where that could have been a, a challenge, I think this board reacted and responded favorably, um, and, and did some good stuff, I think when we think about the citizens and they have input, we always err on the right side of that. Um, and for that, I'm thankful, um, I'm thankful for our department heads who've always done a good job consistently, um, to improve the lives of our citizens. Pickleball is the, is the new thing right now, and, and I'm hoping that that continues to, to breed life into the county, um, because we don't have any other sports where everybody can participate together. Um, I'm still waiting to see Sam and, and Wendy out on a court and, and see if that happens, um. But i, i, it's been a good year, I'm looking forward to next year, um, we've had four years together, and I'm looking forward to the next four to, to wrap up some good projects, um, and to take us into, uh, that next level that we need to go in. And not on a bad note, the reality is that we have to do something about the taxes, um, and that's gonna be an interesting push. I hope that we communicate that well, um, and that citizens understand that it's what's necessary, um, for us to, to be in compliance, and also to receive all of our funds, so don't be surprised when the bills come out next year, just remember, we advocated for it. Merry Christmas.
There's nothing else, y'all have kinda, y'all have kinda summed everything up, so, uh, with that saying being said, if I could get a motion adjourned to executive session for a very brief legal.
So moved.
Second.
All favor eye?
Aye.
And thank everybody for coming.